Love you, who will love you? I see she doesn't have sense. You have found me, you have found me such no further. If you are looking for a church that will love you, that will love you, I see we do not have sense. You have found us, you have found us such no further. If you are looking for a church that will love you, that will love you, I see she doesn't have sense. You have found us, you have found us such no further. If you are looking for a girl who will love you, who will love you, I see she doesn't have sense. You have found me.
Lift your hands. God sent a man in the name. He himself was not a witness, but he came to testify. He spoke about that truth like every man. And the voice of one crying in the wilderness made great the way of the Lord. Lord, in all dispensations you use men as announcers of your presence. And tonight is no different. So you said in your word in Psalm 118, “Save now, Lord, send now prosperity; for the stone the builders have rejected has become the chief cornerstone. Blessed is he that cometh in the name of the Lord.” That means the man God sends that comes in the name of God brings us the blessing. That's why I said how good and pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. For there the Lord commanded the blessing, life forevermore. And tonight we encounter life. Whatever is dead in your life, by this service, by this ignite the fire camp, you come alive in the name of Jesus. Hallelujah! Give the Lord the shout of praise and take your seats. Hallelujah! Praise the Lord! God move! Amen. Walking in the realm of God. How many of you, how many of you needed God to help you to pray 12 hours yesterday? Lift your hands. Is that you were, when it was sister here, you wanted to die? But you say, “Lord, help me.” Hallelujah! Snap your hands for Jesus for praying for 12 hours. Snap your hands. Amen. It's a blessing. It's a blessing. And I know that as your spirit has been charged, there's nothing that's going to obstruct the flow of God's presence. Now, as we've taught you all this time in church, when a prophet comes, you receive him in the name of a prophet. You don't receive a prophet visor what you saw him on television. Otherwise, you deny yourself encounters or realms of operation. God would have decided to use this service to first of all, display. So you receive him in the name, in the way, in the manner God called him. So that in case there is a realm he has not yet displayed, we can collect that one. Hallelujah! Amen? So you never receive a man in the name of, you know, Bible says, “No, no man after the flesh.” So what you know on TV today, discard it. Father, deliver us from what? I can't hear you say, “Deliver us from what?” What you know before, delete it. So you can receive the fresh remembrance of God's word. Hallelujah! Now we have some wonderful men of God, my own brother, prophets Benjamin Amwar and his wife. Reverend Benjamin Isambon and his wife. Yeah. We've known ourselves for close to 30 years. Very powerful brother, wonderful and amazing man of God. And my own pastor sister from Nigeria, Pastor Aidy. Thank you for coming. Yes. Hallelujah! Where are the Dusman people? Zimbabwe, where are you? Lift your hands. Kenya, where are you? Where is Kenya? Where is Daphne? Lift your hands. Where are my Llanduin people? Where's the Kenya? Canada people, where's Canada? Yeah. So these people, God graced them to travel just for camp meeting. It's a blessing to have all of them around. And we know it's the beginning of many, 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 many moments like this. Um, we came to this mountain on purpose. So that whatever the man of God brings is for us. When we are in the city, everybody comes to call us someone. Sometimes I even change the message. But this one is customized message. Tell them it's customized diet, a special diet. That's why you don't see a lot of people here. My father and the Lord, Dr. George, wanted to be here. He says his greetings, Papa. He says, “He wish he was here.” But his flight lands around 5:36, so he said, “I should send my greetings.” Hallelujah! So today, we are going to receive a man of God that has been a father to me, a mentor to me, a coach to me. Many times I see my smile a lot. I ask questions, then he'll say something, then I ask question again. I never tell him what I can do. I'm not interested in him knowing I can do anything. That's not the position of a son. My own is to collect. As long as Elijah was on earth, all he knew Elijah to do was to clean shoes and cut garlic and feed the horses. He was the minister of Elijah. Elijah never saw Elijah prophesying. It was at the departure that Elijah displayed greater gifts than ever had been seen. So sometimes we are tempted as sons to try to impress our fathers. They have seen more. They have seen more. There's nothing, they love us, that's enough. Hallelujah! Can we celebrate our father for loving us? For loving us, living all his shadow. We didn't rest, traveled a long distance just to come and bless us. Can we say, “Jesus, thank you.” Hallelujah! You may be seated. And he came with high-ranking apostles from the Porta City. Pastor Martin, Pastor Albert, Pastor Nanaya, Pastor Asian. I can see Pastor Taiki close. I see all of them, God's will. I see all of them. The Lord bless you all for coming. The Lord bless Porta City. Oh, I see Rabbi. I salute you, sir. I salute you, sir. And all his team and aid the camp that escorted him to come here. Please open your spirit up and receive with meekness. Don't think you know something. Receive with meekness, the engrafted word of God. Daddy likes response. Please respond for me. I've told you already, eh? Respond. Amen. Don't let daddy feel like he's in another church. He has come to Ephesus. He's in his house. Amen? So when he's talking, respond. Hallelujah! If you are struggling, shout, “God move!” Hallelujah! Papa, with Jesus' joy and celebrations, receive me, sir. Hallelujah! If your neighbor is shouting louder than you, he has already taken your blessing. Move, move, move! Let's celebrate Jesus. Move! Let's celebrate Jesus. Let's exalt the name of the Lord. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. I'm having a very mixed feeling because when I entered here and I saw you, I remembered where I started from. Amen. Um, honestly speaking, whatever your father told you, don't take it today. I don't feel like preaching to you. I want to talk to you. In fact, I want to share my heart. Because you know, I don't even think this generation have a preaching problem. We don't have. Since Jesus died, there's no generation that has received the word and this generation. I think our problem is practicing of the word. We don't have preaching of the word. This, your father, my son, is a man of the word. I know me. I can stand here. Um, I'm sure you have put me online. I wish I'm not online. So that means I have to change the message. No, the reason, because what I'm going to share, I just don't want it to go online. But don't worry, I'll change it. Because, uh, don't worry, the online people, they are good. So online people are not. So I'll shift my spirit a little bit. Because it's not everything that is for online consumption. You see, I am a very online person. I, I, I am standing here. I, I think on Wednesday, started Monday. I've been traveling. Your father knows wherever. I flew 15 hours from Canada to Dubai because I needed to get here. When I go to Dubai, watch this. I missed my flight. So they said, “We can put you on the next flight, the following day.” So I have to sleep in Dubai. Then Tuesday, I, Wednesday I was in the flight. I got down and I have to preach in a church, full gospel. And I preached that Wednesday and Thursday. And yesterday I was at the all night. And when I closed all night, I ran nine. I have to be in another program. In fact, I was in a program with the father of this compound bishop, Dark's wife. We had a lot of pictures, we're talking. And I even told him I have to leave because I'm coming to this program. Now, they said something to themselves. She said, “Whoever has invited you must be a very special person.” And I said, “Well, he's very, very special.” I said, “Prophet, I'm looking at your schedule and for you to leave and come and still be here.” And I say, “I will not miss this program for anything.” No, for anything. I'm telling you. I have, I have preached here almost every year I come, but I've never... Your father is one of the beloved men in my heart. I, I, you see, it takes me a very long... I'm not used to flatter. I can go to a meeting and I forget to introduce my wife. She doesn't even care. See now, he doesn't even want me to introduce her. Because me, I don't believe in introduction. Yes, introduce yourself and just go. Hallelujah! Uh, so that when I get to the meeting and my spirit is just heavier and I feel God is speaking, I just... I marry a woman who does in, a pastor's wife was leaving him because he didn't introduce her. Wow! Serious. Look at the lady and say, “You look like that pastor's wife, eh? It's possible you are that kind of person.” Yeah. Yeah. The woman said he didn't introduce her to wave his hand to the congregation. Wow! Hallelujah! And so he wanted to leave the pastor. Yeah, she, yeah. He wanted to leave the pastor for not introducing the pastor. How many of you want to marry pastors? God bless you. All of you are lying. All the rest of you are honest. Unfortunately, you are in the country. You mean that when you get a pastor like your father, you're a man? You know, 30 something years ago, when we became born again, the question I asked, if you lift your hand, your family will excommunicate you. Because those times it was not, not to marry a pastor. There is one of the fathers of the land, I don't want to mention his name. He told me, “When the wife now introduce him to the father that I'm going to marry, the father open a book of condolence.” Yeah, my daughter is dead, so people should come and say. So that is where we are. Because those the pastors were like, “No! Their coat of their armpit is torn. Their shoe, one is looking at the east and one is looking at the west.” But over the year, we have changed the story. Oh, yes. But that's why we have changed the story, whether you believe that's what it is. No! That's the truth. I have a family, long, long distant family relationship. Who say God has calling? So they ask him to go and work. I heard the story. Then they ask him, “Your calling is in a next type of calling.” They say, “If it's my type of calling, it should go. But if it's not my type, it should go and work.” May that become your testimony, where you change a certain trend. What? Hallelujah! You don't have a choice. This kind of training your father is giving to you, you cannot fail. No! To pray for 12 hours? Hey, you cannot fail. I said, “You cannot fail. And you will not fail. And nothing will cause you to fail. Everything will work together for you. You will marry the right man. You will marry the right woman. You will enjoy favor. And you will prosper.” Hallelujah! Yeah, yeah, yeah. Amen. When I go to Dubai and then I missed my flight, the guy look at my state tour. He said, “Wow, you are a platinum star in this airline.” He said, “Why are you wasting your time? Buy your own plane.” The guy told me, he said, “Yes, why don't you fly your own private jet?” I said, “I look at him, an Arab man, he was prophesying to me.” Those who are telling us they are not clapping. Those are the... (Singing) 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 The glory of the Lord. (Singing) 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 Oh, Jesus. (Singing) 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 Let your children to Jesus. Today, may you hear the voice of God. Amen! I've been saying, what we hear from man is information. That's right. But what you hear from God is a revelation. Yes, sir. So God goes speaks and you hear. You are stepping to revelation. And revelation will naturally lead you to illumination. And when you are illuminated, you walk in a God realm. You don't look like the other Ephesians or people. Something is about to sit in your life. (Singing) 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 Joseph, I want you to catch something this now. Catch something. When your father was introducing, he says some very powerful things. Hallelujah! This generation is connecting and had opportunity to contact a lot of great anointing. But they are not catching it. In fact, let me tell you, there's so much lingering anointings in the system. Because your input determines your output. The reason I know you have a bright future is because of what you are doing now. And I'll preach more and share my heart. This is where we started from. This is where. Amen. I used to take people on the waiting like this. Not too far from here, a duck room, a breed. IGP Akko's house is around this place, former IGP Akko. I used to go there. Before I married my wife, we were at that place for 21 days of fasting. For the government. Thank God for principles, but he doesn't build anything. It's encounters. I did a study on American motivational preaching. They've not produced anything. It's encounters. It's encounters. One encounter with the Lord is worth more than a life of struggle. One encounter move a man from individual to a nation. What is your name? He said, “My name is Jacob.” He said, “From today, your names are no more because Jacob and Israel, from individual to a nation.” Today, may you encounter God in a very... That will revolutionize your life. You cannot encounter God when you are proud. It takes humility. Did you hear what your father said? Somebody was polishing the prophet's shoe and cutting what? Is it onion or garlic? They're bashing about garlics and when you cut it, they sent you, will stick your hand, your nose, everything. You don't get anointing from the kitchen. Today, when I finish preaching, then you, you get happy. You are challenged or you are offended. But that is your business. No, where I've come to, I left the place of entertaining people. Do you know that when I was at your stage, I never get anybody to lead me like this? I have to learn to lead myself. I never get anybody. Hallelujah! Get hungry for encounters. Now watch this. You see, the spirit of just make perfect. God told Elijah to anoint Elijah. He didn't do it. Because Elijah know that it's not easy to get anointed. Go and anoint Elijah to take your place. Anoint hisself, anoint Jehu. There is no record in scripture he did an anointing service. Didn't do it. After 17 years of pouring water and cutting onions and garlic, she still didn't want you to have anointing. He says, “Stay here, the Lord has sent me.” You see, Elijah was not the only prophet that follow Elijah, but he's only one that was determined. Today, may you be exceptional among the people who like Elijah. Elijah! Now watch it. There was a sons of the prophet in Gilgal. There was a sons of the prophet in Jericho. There was a sons of the prophet. They, they have a word of knowledge. They can have the insight, but they don't have hunger. They are picket in the spirit. Do you know the Lord is going to take your master away? But they were not hungry for what the man carries. No! All they know, the father you give word of, that's what you can bear. That is a groundbreaking anointing. Parcorder prayer. Son, I was in Canada. I was trying to have a... The Lord told me, “You are not eating for this day.” He said, “Principality is gathering because you are here.” I was in Germany. The Lord told me, “Their power should face in Canada. They are double here.” Really? Master Martin was there. And what a ground! The hotel said, “We have never seen anything like this.” Now, we signed a contract with the hotel to preach. We close at 12. They came back, they said, “From police headquarters, you cannot go beyond 10:30.” You can negotiate. I told the hotel, the hotel people said, “Listen. Where are you taking it to? This is coming from the top. How did the top know I'm here? I have not started preaching yet, though. I have not started preaching yet. We are facing it. They said, “You cannot.” Friday, they said, “You can't do all night.” Over 30 police was around. Some people think going to countries is a fun fair. Receive grace to break every barrier. Some of the people that follow me at Uverti, they don't even know what is going on. Some of them will be having nice time walking in town. They don't know what is going on. They don't have the spiritual radar. No, they don't know what is going on. I can't even depend on there. No! The Lord said, “This is not a matter of rest prayer warriors.” I have a man who used to bless me ministry, early days of my ministry. He was the first man to build a block building in his hometown in Vota Ridge. His uncle said, “You are disgracing us. You can't do this.” Messes should go there, five messes, all of them will be running this to man. So finally, he took prayer warriors there. I remember he told me, he said, “Prophet, lay hands on the prayer warriors. I'm taking them.” Seven prayer warriors. So while the messes are laying blocks, you'll be, they'll be praying. Suddenly, a python appear. The prayer warrior leader was a guy who jumped the wall and they scattered. They scattered! You can claim you are anointed until you face your Coliza. Now, when I was in Germany, the most important thing at the place I found myself was the voice of God. I saw the importance of the voice of God. Don't contend anything. Agree with the 10:30 and close exactly 10:30. And God was glorified. Today, I want to, I want you to receive impartation. What do I call it? They have inside to know. You know, people talk about Potter City. Some even talk and they will say that, "Where did they get money from?" Interestingly, nobody's money is missing, but they are still asking, "Where did they get money from?" Since we started building potters. Today, I was sitting with the the mother of this company, and he was talking to me about some things. Let me see, I didn't know, he knows all those things about me. But he didn't come by. Stay in the kitchen. Reverend, you told me something, he said, "You know, anytime I come here, there are people around you take potters for granted, because they see it every day. But those of us, when we visit, it's something for us." He said, "I respected potters when I started doing a little construction." Do you hear what he said? He said, "I was paying things with my blood." He said, "When I come and I see you walking around and you don't feel burdened, so comfortable." I said, "How is this man doing it?" One day, he come, he said, "Prof, can you show me the people in the church that you contacted for money?" And I say, "For your interest, I have never contacted one person." It's not my style of ministry. If I told them, "Anybody that say you are the one, if not because of you, potters not build," may the Lord kill you. Ask them, I told them. Because when we take what to put in, it will have no effect. God and Lord be the glory, God build it for himself. Me and you, when we take it down, it will have no effect. Can I profess how about you? From today, no one will take glory for what God is going to do with your life. I said, "No one would take glory for what God is about to do with your life." Catch the anointing. When I was coming, I said, "Because they are in camp, there will be no one alive." But you know, if you go and put me off now, the all night people, they will never forgive me. So leave them there and let me do whatever I want to do. Because my wife came to me when I was in a prayer room. I returned from the program after one night, went to the next program. And he asked, "Boy, will you go and sleep small?" I said, "Yes, I like that the Lord say you can't sleep." Mommy is my witness, he said, "Go to your bed, prayer room and pray." Because when you go and visit those, these wonderful children that are in camp, I call you children because you are all my children. Now listen, if your father is my son, then you are my grandchildren. But you are not even my children, you are my grandchildren. Amen. A lot of people think I'm a young boy, I'm not a young, I'm not young. There was some Ghana girl in a flight who was serving me. And the first guy came to me and say, "I really like everything about you." I was, I was, I was watching, mommy was asleep, and then there is something he said, he said, "The lady there, is she your, is she like your big sister or something?" I can make her see you small than coming, but I stopped because when I said it, it took him to pass. Then, then he, she wanted to ask me, say, "Did you just complete university?" So I went to the, I said, "I'm coming, excuse me." Then I went to the, 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 it was Airbus Street, I went to the, the toilet. They have a very nice, I look at myself, say, "Lord, am I that young?" What are you? Anyway, mommy has been calling me small boy, small boy, so I think it's working. So that I come, he said, "Small boy, come here." I said, "I meet you, I'll be coming." He called me small boy. "You want to meet me tomorrow, call me small boy." What, what? Listen, one encounter is not principle. It's not how much scriptures you have. There was a bigger teacher you have, you was a drunker, but you know all the Bible. It's not a scripture, it's encounters. Do you know that all the prophets didn't know what Elijah carried? Only Elisha has that insight. They have the word of knowledge that do know that God will take your master, but they were standing on the mountain and said, "Do you know God will take your master? Do not take you great your master." Now, where I saw the guy was determined is when they go to Jordan. I didn't care Gilgal, I didn't care Jericho, I didn't care. When they go to Jordan, and I also know that when they go to Jordan, he has, he can't mix it. I told you, Jordan is a place of beginning and ending. So when they take bring you to the spiritual realm in Jordan, it's yours. Moses ministry ended at Jordan, Joshua picking from Jordan. So if Elijah is going to cross the Jordan, then his ministry is ending. And Elisha was picking from Jordan. John the Baptist ministry ended at Jordan, and Jesus picking from Jordan. So Jordan is a place of beginning and ending. When you leave here, may you enter your Jordan where you can pick something that will take you for life. The Jordan of your future marriage. The Jordan of your ministry. No, when we were landing, when we were in the Bree Mountains here, fasting, those apostle Dogue, those guys were part of Omega team, we didn't know who go to the well. Do you know that every country we are going to preach, we have our own instrument? We bought 200 and something thousand equipment for Canada, without renting one. We bought another equipment for Geneva in Germany. Now listen, if you arrange our LED screens in America, there is another set that is more than the one that is arranged. So talk is shit. It's shit. I can see people talk and I look at them. That's why I love this one. I was praying for him when I was abroad. He tested me, I started praying, the Lord said, "I will bless him because of the spirit of honor." Now hear this, there are so many generations, they dishonor with their little. You see, this man standing here, I have survived this for years. I have done all night in this country for more than 24 years. Non-stop, it means I have to start an anointing, continuous anointing, and I am entering the finishing anointing. Now listen, some people have never even entered the continuous anointing. But they will be talking against men who are, who are working where they have not tried. That will lead me to my next point. I went to Nigeria, and when I was in Redeem Christian camp and I was in Kenalan, before I went for daughter Yungito to pray for me, I asked the Lord about the secret of Nigerian Christianity. I picked that revelation of where I was sleeping in Kenalan. I was there with Bishop Taki Aboye, Bishop Bankuma, and all the rest. "Lord, what is the secret of this?" He said, "The spirit of honor." They will never be familiar with the people that they follow. They will never speak against them. Bishop Aboye, they say, "If you talk against Hagi, you are my enemy for life." He said, "You cannot come to me and talk against Papa the boy." "I will crush you." You will not welcome. Honor. Today, we have, we have associate pastors in our generation, work, it can even be my church, who will sit there and discuss about their senior pastor. All these guys that have followed me, there is nothing around them that I need, but they will forever need what I can't. I don't need anything, is it your car or what? I'll let that stay. If you see me have anything in my house, church persuade is not inside. To even jealousy, you can die. Not persuade, I am one strange pastor, no church has bought me a house or buy me a car. It's not against it, the people that live the gospel and live by the gospel, the people that preach, also for let the church buy you car. Me, the kind of message I preach, eh, it is no good for any dickens to sign my check. When they get angry, they will tell me, "Your salary is suspended." If I'm not clapping, I will stop preaching. The kind of message I preach, the way I am, no, 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 no. Are you getting what I'm talking about? I started it from Bedin Power. I started it, I started it. After you are ready to catch the anointing, check your heart. Check your heart. Guard your heart with all diligent, it determines the course of your life. The problem with our generation is the state of our heart. You can be, you can be faking it to everybody. Hallelujah to Jesus Christ. I came with some of my sons there. There are people who write to me and send me long messages, some of my sons, I don't even talk about it. I don't talk about it. I don't, no, because they are here. I have record, people tell me, "Be careful with this person, be careful with that person, this what is doing, this what is doing, this what is doing." I don't talk about it. I have never called one of them to tell you, I have some of the messages dead in my phone, not even my wife is aware of it. I pray for them that go to change their, because that path you cannot last. Somebody called me, one of my sons is doing Zoom program and sharing the things to the same church members and collecting offering. I say, "Because I didn't do that way to come to where I am." Let me tell you my foolishness. One day, Pastor Joe knows that thing, I was serving at my father Reverend Pia Kofi, and somebody bought me a Land Cruiser. Maybe Pastor Martin knows the case, a Land Cruiser. I told the person, "I can't drive the car. I have to give it to my father." He said, "You can't give it because the car is low." I gave it to him as a gift, I'm paying it small, small. And, and, and it's in your name, so you can't give it. Then I told him, "I can't drive it." So he asked what the solution is, I said, "Unless my father get one, I can't drive." So I packed the car in a garage. I was a very young preacher and got him a higher version. When he move his home, then I move my, I said, "Why did you get this one?" He said, "That my home has been there long time." May the Lord give you a genuine heart. That is why I said, "If today you didn't put him on, I could have told you." Your heart to determine where you end tomorrow. There are, somebody asked me, "Why don't you talk about this thing?" I say, "Because I don't need to talk about it. The way you have started, I know you won't end where. It has shown your heart, it shows the course of your heart. You are not in this thing for what you can get. The people that bless me, they are not in my ministry." Also for, some of them has never stepped, the man that gave me the biggest blessing, he has never stepped in my ministry. He gave me a cheque, I thought he made a mistake. I call him, I say, "You made a mistake of the church." He says, "It's not a mistake, it's bad payment." I can't tell you, you, you are not walking in that realm. May you receive impartation. Your heart, your heart. It's a wrong heart that will propose to again disappointed. Do you know you can be praying 12 hours, but your heart is not correct? Look at your neighbors, I sense your heart is not correct, tell the person, "I can sense that." Everybody can pray. Everybody can pray. Everybody can pray. No, the test can be the genuineness of the heart. As for myself and Caleb and Joshua, they have another heart. And therefore, they will enter the lab. Another heart. Another heart. Another heart. Another heart. That we saw, all the residents have it. Do you know something? Everybody thought Job's wife was a good wife. And to God tested Job. She came to tell Job, "Kiss God and that's why I can marry another man." Now, it's logically debatable, but they believe that when God restored Job in Job chapter 42, the woman that he married that time was not his wife. Because God do not entertain a servant to marry a man, to marry a woman that tell the man to kiss he God. If Job's wife tell Job to kiss God, then God will brought that woman out. Because what was happening to Job was discussed and permitted. Tell your sister, your brother, "Pass the test, pass the test." Check your heart. You follow this system, you will go. If one day there's no potters, I'll still survive. If there is no ministry, if they, they sack me, they say, "Come come to potters again." One day, Bishop, Papa Bishop, Bishop Ben said that Hosa was in America. Some dickens, they could say, "You are, you are, you are fired." He was in America, when the dickens is coming, they say, "From today, you are not, we are the dickens, we are the bull." You are not. He came and said, I forgot what he said it. That man said, he lifted his hand and make one programming. The first, they can die. The second one died with his children in an accident. The third one came back, he said, "Papa, Papa, you confuse me, I'm not part of it." Your future good marriage determine the state of your heart. Listen, you don't become successful because you have PhD. Most of your professors are broke. So success is not connected to academic excellence. It's the greatest fallacy they've told you. Some of the wealthiest people don't have their school dropout. So at the education, it's bad, go to school. But there are principles that release success. You can only get it by line upon line, precept upon precept, upon the way. Your heart, your heart, that is the one God is looking. That's the one God is watching. It's not your action. All the people that divorce you, do you know they love them? "I love you, I cannot sleep." As I was preaching all night, somebody tested the guy. And I asked the guy, what did the guy say? He said that, "When I can't see your face, I can't sleep." Don't say, "Hey, you have been tested, don't have you to be doing that." Very nice, I'm somebody, the guy, the guys has been tested. The guy tested the guy, he said, "That's your face alone." Who know whether the sister is here, he might be. Check your heart, check your heart. Now listen, look at what Jesus said, "It is not hard go to a man that defile him." And he started inside adultery, finagation, eh, he talk about greediness. He said, "They all come from the heart. They all come from the heart, they come from the heart, they come from the heart." When did Judas become a devil? Have I not chosen you that whoever one is a devil? When? Was he a devil before Jesus chose him or he became a devil after Jesus chose? There is no guarantee that where you are standing, you can maintain it tomorrow. It depends on the state of your heart. I don't believe Jesus chose Judas as a devil, he became a devil after. Because when Mary Magdalene broke the lamb's heart, he was the first to criticize. Why didn't this one be sold and the money given to the poor? And the Bible said, "Not because he cared for the poor, but because he steals." Go and check it in the Bible, that means that his heart was not correct. Check your heart. Check the state of your heart. No. Check it. It determine the course of your life. So you are not committing finagation because it started in the heart. That is why grace said that when you look at a woman, you last, you have already done it. Because they had to do it before the action. So hear this, hear this, hear this, hear this, hear this. A lot of the guys that come, "I love you." If it's not from their heart, they are pretending. And if they are pretending with time, they will destroy your heart. And you, you didn't pray, you are so stupid that you hear that today. May you be delivered from unreasonable. Now listen, Paul said that pray that you be delivered from unreasonable and wicked man. And they were in the church. They were in the church. They were in the church. Check your heart. Everybody can say anything about you, positive, negative, check your heart. The Lord told me, it's not what people say about you, what is the state of your heart? No, it's the state of your heart. Adulthood is in the heart, finication is in the heart, greediness is in the heart. No, serving around men of God, the state of your heart determine the value, because you see, God does not, promotion does not come from anyone. All these men that are serving, I can promote to them. I can only direct them, you go and pastor a church in Canada, you go here, but it's their heart that will determine what they get from God. So it's important to lay bare before the Lord, that is why they will praise, search me and know my heart, that means I don't trust myself. Lord, no, 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 I can be deceiving myself, try me and know my top. If you are standing here, you are feeling uncomfortable, you are the one I'm talking about. If you feel like, I saw what you be sah, it's like, you, is anybody here, touch somebody, I swear that this type of preacher is sah. If you see the person body, you should drag the person to the altar. Give the Lord the shout of praise. By this thing that you are using, look at the way you have traveled from Canada, come from London, come from all these places, God bring you here for the purpose. But you see, your heart, and let me tell you, it's within the heart you have unbelief, it's within the heart you have faith, so everything is in the heart. Doubt in your mind does not really produce anyhow, it is doubt in the heart. So you can have faith in your heart and doubt in your mind, you still break through. Because if you have faith as a grain of master's seed, you shall say to this mountain, be thou removed, and be thou cast into the sea, and shall not doubt in your heart. So doubt in the heart, it's, that means you have come under satanic attack. Fear is in the heart. And one of the things, one of the weapons that deal with fear is love. There are three strong weapons against fear, God does not give you the spirit of fear, but of power, of love and of sound mind, that's the three weapons against fear. The spirit of love, the spirit of power, where do you get power from, what you are doing, fasting and prayer, praying for 12 hours, are you getting it? The spirit of love, nobody can pray for love, the love of God is already said abroad in your heart, practice it. You see, also for, this lady, she is my P, I disturb her, but she has a genuine heart. I've never said it, I'm telling you, I used to tell my wife. One day I told my wife, I still find a problem why his first husband couldn't keep Maria. I don't think that man will successfully marry again. I know her by the heart, I pick her by the heart, there are people around me with wrong heart, I know, I will never talk about it, it's not everything Jesus said. Jesus, you know Judas Iscariot, he didn't cancel him. The reason Jesus didn't rebuke him is that the heart is already corrupted. Oh, I, I, I taught everyone she would like clapping, the last time we were in, have you seen it? The heart, the heart, I am standing here because of the state of my heart. If you judge me by my temperament, you make a mistake, there is a heart I have. There is a heart, there is a heart, and God knows about it. That is why God corrected me in every step of my mistake, so that God return me saying, this thing you did, it's not you. It's not you, don't let people change you to be something you are not, no. One day, as I bless people and they start rebelling and some of the people, I stand in fasting and prayer, they misbehave, the Lord told me, you are not in control of how people love you. Maintain your good heart. No, it's your catching, amen, heart, heart. It is where fear comes from, it is where faith comes from, it is what it is, God will touch people to be a blessing. If your heart is good, I'm telling you, you don't need to depend on anybody. It is a blessing to wake up and you are not depending on anybody. That means that there is no one person that live your life as if your life has crashed. I don't have that person, I will never have it. I'll never have one, hallelujah, check your heart, check your heart. The father, you able to propose to two girls at the same time. Your heart is not correct, it's polygamy in the rehearsal. Oh, if you shouted, you are delivered from it. Polygamy in the rehearsal. Do you know what you are practicing? That means that when you marry one of them, you commit adultery to one of them. Straight forward. I finished my word, the way we went for honeymoon, you know the prayer, I pray, Lord, thank you for this woman you have given me, I'm so appreciated, all the billions of women in the world, I will get one, please, after I've married, you know, I've decided to serve you till you return, let me see all women like trees. Somebody said, did God answer that prayer, I don't know, but cassava tree, baobab tree, oh, this thing. Then I have to find a scripture to validate my prayer. So there was a blind man that Jesus opened his eyes and he said, I see men like trees, I said, ah, I got it. May you be delivered from him. Never look around, yes, I have been tried and tested, I have never, no woman dead or alive. Hey Prophet, and I had, make advance towards me, ha, give me, kiss me, no woman dead or alive. Dead or alive, no, no. Nobody will puncture my holiness message. Are you getting what I'm talking about? If you have done it, God has forgiven you, but don't repeat it, some of you, you have done, look at your neighbor, say, if the way you are quiet, quiet, it shows that you have been doing it. Tell the person you have done. We don't have the holiness with her here. No, your past is clean, you'll be fine. Put your hands, say, Lord, create in me a clean heart. David prayed that prayer, she woke up one day and said, Lord, create in me and renew a steadfast spirit. God gave me a prayer point one day, said, pray that I'll give you a repentant heart, because Pharaoh couldn't repent. If you find yourself in a sin that you can't stop doing it, it means you have not received grace or repentance on that earth. Am I preaching? Now, let's leave the heart, let's come to another point. Character. Character, character. Oh, today the dad, you didn't come well, I came well. After this, then I'll take you to the realm of the spirit. This is all you need, character, now, hear this. And that one, I can doubt it, what you are doing, it will naturally take you to the top. Let me say that again, I'm going to say it very slow. Come pay three hours. Jesus Christ, it will take you to the top, but it is character that must keep you at the top. What is character, is the security of every great destiny. Character is the security of every great destiny. There is one common denominator around all great men, I study pastors who have sustained anointing. There was a man who was doing studies, called eh, 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 Pastor Chad Stanley, one of the standing teacher, first Baptist church, she went to be with the Lord recently, his wife divorced him, he never married again. I study men that has kept anointing for years, and there was one common denominator, find they are disciplined. Disciplined. Do you know that if you don't have discipline, you can't come to a camp? It takes discipline. No, so I like what you are saying, this is not just for everybody, many are called, so this are for the chosen ones, this one. We are starting our 70 days fasting from 30, we are going to be doing some of this camp. The Lord gave me a different plan, so I'll gather some of the few people, put them in the place for three days, and so that we pray seven hours non-stop, five hours non-stop, because the power is in the prayer. And build them and prepare, the Lord told me, use these 70 days to raise me an army. Sometime I'll call pastors like my son, Adam and all of you are come and say, let's gather, as many as my heart will connect to, and then for three days we are praying. Because some of them, I want them to build Potter City type in all their generations, I want them, so we have to call ourselves on them. You cannot stand here and say, even if I don't speak the English, you understand, I was in America and they say, wait, what did this, I said, hey. I gave a prophecy, they were all, I said, listen, when you acted your movie, you will come, rest, 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 you will listen, you better listen to my accent, because I'm speaking by the Holy Ghost. I'm speaking by the Holy Ghost, they say, oh my God, oh my God, oh my God, we can hear, I say, you better hear. When, when people don't want to hear the word and practice, they pretend they are not getting answered. Who told you Jesus is an Englishman? Tell your neighbor, tell your neighbor, character, character, character. Hey, you see, all the beautiful daughters we have here, listen, your beauty will take you to marriage, but character must keep you there. You know why I love this man, daughter here, genuine, humble, character. If he gives me, yeah, and they give me a gift, so one day they gave me a gift, when I went, my mom started fighting. He said, you are going to collect all your sons' things, I said, I didn't collect, he gave it to me. He said, you collected this, I said, I didn't collect it, you can call him and ask him, he said, you say, you, you, look at the things you have brought, I said, I said, did they, is the, is the, is your daughter who gave the thing to me? Then my wife said something, I don't know whether it's just a prophecy, she said, ah, they will be great. Your expertise on them, oh no. You don't have character. If your husband ministry is going down, you don't have, some of you sitting here praying, do you know that the way you are praying, God will mark you to marry a pastor? Because I was in a plane, when the Lord told me that, a lot of pastors' marriages have been destroyed because of wrong women. If you marry the wrong person, you are not strong to be the end of your ministry. Do you know the Bible warns us of women than the devil? Royal Jesus. Look at the way they are looking at me. Ah, what? All the women, eh, daddy, eh, okay. Number one, am I the one who wrote the Bible? Proverbs chapter 7. Let's read, New Testament translation, Proverbs, I'll give you one, I'll give you two, three, and then we'll see, Proverbs chapter 7, my son. Hear this, follow my advice, my son, always treasure my commandment. He's talking to his son, obey my commands and leave, guard my instructions as you guard your own eyes. Yeah, let's see, tie them on your fingers as a reminder, write them deep within your heart, what is this? Eh, love wisdom like a sister, make insight a beloved member of your family. He's going, let them protect you from an affair with an immoral woman. If you like, now don't shout, and listen, am I the one who wrote the Bible? He said all that he said, to say you must be protected. Now listen, to be this kind of woman is a choice. Thank God that you are holy, sanctified, holy ghostful, anointed woman, but this one is a joke. Now let me go deeper, let me go deeper, let me go deeper. Check, since God created the earth, which species of creature has interrupted his plan? Check. It is recorded in this word, hallelujah. God created this man, put him in the garden, and said, it's not good that the man should be alone, and brought you. And then you, if the car fit you, wear it. This lady came to the garden, and the Lord said, you can eat of all the fruit. Now listen, according to theology, when I did a research, there were thousands of fruit in the garden. Eve went straight to the forbidden fruit, plug it, and give it to his husband. Now this is the danger, listen, this is why the Bible is warning us, because listen, 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 you have enough power to control a man. How God did that, I still cannot explain, I have done a research, I have, listen to me, I have asked God questions, and when they told me, I don't owe you an answer. How we are so vulnerable before women? The power, look at this. God said, hey boy, Abraham, I will make your descendants like a star, you are a man of faith, walk with me. It's why he said, go to the tent, Heger is there. Abraham, forget God, John, 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 and walk to the tent, think about it. There are some ladies that they have said that, you better stand up, bro, because I'm not finished with you. I wish my wife is here to do this demonstration, but let me try it. For the purpose of demonstration, what is this? Sit down, girl, come, sit down. Love, are you married? Sit there, you are not married, we can use you. Put your leg here. Watch this, this is the picture. This woman, he said, Samson, where is your power? God says, Samson, I have a secret of my covenant with you. Do you know, Samson is the only judge in the Bible without an army? Samson never have an army troop, he was one man army, because what 10,000 armies can do, Samson, Jesus. Oh, concerned to all of you have come, what is this? This is God's man. And he said, don't tell anybody that the power is in your head. This guy says, Sammy, where is the power, he said, Ewaha, it's here. This is the picture, Samson was lying on the laps of Delilah. This guy, she will marry a pastor, she will be a great woman, and I'm there. You, Teresa, of lying down, you lie down, ah. Give the Lord the shout of praise. So listen, do you know, you can be sitting as a woman, you don't know the power you have. Okay, 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 today I was reading something when I was going to all night, and I came to the place where the Bible said, Jessebe wrote letters in the name of Ahab. And used the letter to kill Naba. That means also for, there are women who have brought the country to a standstill. A lot of people think it's the presidents that rule, check their wife. Power of a woman. I have seen powerful people, young guys tell them, take a picture, lift your leg, race like this, put the, 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 powerful man, strong man. If you are not shouting, you are suspect. Listen! Woman! Okay? A pastor told me a story, he slept with a girl in the church. And the girl started tormenting her. I have videos of what we did. Buy me a house in this place. The pastor bought it. He said, I want S class. Finally, when he tell the pastor, I said, what is your problem? Tell him to show it. And collect the house and the car. I said, listen, and that is what the pastor, no sex is free, no sex is secret. No sex is secret. You can lock the door, put off the light, all the demons are watching. You better shout to the Lord, and listen to me when I'm preaching. I am bringing you to the place, no sex is secret. Build character! It's the security of your destiny. We cannot bring you to a camp that you should get up there and start messing up. Throw your identity. Do you know how many women has brought the church down? Do you know the kind of women that has brought it? Do you know how many pastors has fallen? And some of them couldn't rise up again? Do you know, Bessiba shot David? Okay, listen. Among all the sex in the Bible, that's the one that shocked me. That is why I saw that, no, don't play with a woman. When David stood at the porch and saw Bessiba bathed, he has seven anointing on his life. Seven, warrior's anointing, shepherd's anointing, poetic anointing, sami's anointing, kingship anointing, prophetic anointing. Seven anointings was on the guy's head. Couldn't resist a woman bathing. No. I'm telling you. No. A man told me, there was a former president in this country. She was coming to Ossu Castle. And the man was a minister. And the wife was coming, everybody stood up, that minister didn't stand up. The wife came back and said, didn't you see me? I'm so, I'm sorry. He said, that time, there was something going on in his sector. So he was a little confused, coming to see the president, how they took her. And the man said, so you think she- He didn't say anything, when that, it happened around 11 AM. By 5 AM, they say presidential reshuffle. But Sammartin is the Minister of Finance, they move him to Agreg. They move this one to eh 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 eh, what's the house eh? The one that didn't stand up, they said, proceed or leave. That is the power of a woman. So hear this. If you are a guy here and you have the call of God on your life, marry well. Listen. Marry the girls that you are fasting and praying with. Marry them. It's a good advice for you. Marry the ones who are fasting and praying. They are the one who are getting me. One day, my son, Pasebe, told me something. And I took it seriously, he said, Papa. They are the one who do the weddings, I don't do weddings. He said, Papa, I have noticed that all the people that imported other guys and girls to the church, their marriages don't work. But those who marry among, because those who marry in this, I have teach some things. The word that says cities in their heart. Some of you guys, even though you are praying, you want to marry a Lady Gaga, that is walking somewhere. You better shout on the door, I'll come to where you are. I, I, I will step into the prophecy to be another dimension altogether. If a guy is not shouting, he is a suspect. You, you, you don't want to marry the girls that are here? You don't like ceremonial women? You don't like righteous women? You want these women that has, add some things to their breasts and put some form up? The devil is a liar. May, may the Lord change your mindset. Do you know something? You can marry after 20 years that you know that you have made the wrong choice. So don't marry for where you are, marry for where you are going. Character! I want you to look at somebody with a very angry face. Don't laugh. If you laugh, you are disqualified. And look at the person and say, do you have character? Ask them. Do you have character? 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 The security of every greatest thing. Character. Listen. It's enjoyable to work with people who have character. It's a blessing. It's a blessing. So much of a blessing. Character is not a gift. Character is not a gift, charisma is a gift. But character is not a gift, you must consciously develop it. You can have all the charisma and not have character. Today, we have pastors committing adultery. Pastors. Men of God. A pastor won American lottery. And he has five children. They say do DNA, two of the children was not for him. I'm telling you live story. Two children belong to the pastor's driver. You see, eh, driver. With dag dag dag, what did it happen? They did the DNA seven times. Doing this country, doing this country, doing this. Character! Now listen, 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 listen. You know, you can be hanging around pretending you have character. Everybody thought Job's wife was a good wife. Until the test started. So sometime, eh, God will allow your husband to go through financial hardship. To test your character. Watch this. Some of the guys that you meet them, you say you love them, they are slave. God will check whether it's the slimness that attract you. The moment they have one child, they become a bolo, God will make- Now, for your information. What I'm preaching can be vice versa. Delilah is not a woman, it's a spirit. Jessebe is not a woman with a French name, it's a spirit. So you can be a man with the Delilah spirit inside. To cause, promising God called women to fall. Tell your neighbor, build character, build character. Build character. Build it. Build character. Why should God bless you? You just got promoted in the bank. From teller to approve a cheque. Then now you have had a girlfriend. Outside your wife. And the Lord said, I'm taking you to a higher steps. Now you are here and you are misbehaving, so you have disqualified yourself from this life. Because God must test you before he move you to a level. Do you know crisis? Crisis simple means stay here and pass what you fear. So when you find yourself in a discomfort situation. And I'm telling you, the power of a woman. The Bible say, David slaved Bessiba, he couldn't accomplish anything again. Even the building he bought the temple, God didn't meet him. It means that Bessiba's ways shut him down. Completely. Shut the man down. God told him, even the temple you can't build, there's too much blood in your hand. And I went, I said, no, 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 Lord, this one, let's talk about it. Blood in David's hand. And I began to show God the scripture. The guy fought 41 battles, all of them, he asks you, and you say, you go and kill. He said, Amalakite? He said, what? Every battle David won it. He said, the blood of Uriah. Uriah's blood, Uriah's blood, Uriah's blood. He's too innocent to go through what he went through. A soldier that has been on the battlefield for three years, and will not go home and kiss his wife. And slept at the entrance of the palace. And he said, the ark is in the battlefield. And my colleagues are there, I can't go and sleep with my wife. What a lawyer man! Sometime the lawyer people are killed premature. So hear this. Don't just be lawyer, be smart and be wise. It's leading me to the next point. It's leading me to the next point. Most time, the people that destroyed the church, they still around for a long time. And they will be driving innocent people. One of the pastors, I, I, somebody came to, the person has small money, small. So I give him and say that, let this pastor pray with you. He came to me, text me one, and he said, Papa, this is your pastor, be careful with her. I didn't say anything. But so, the problem is that, they don't have a future with her character. I didn't go that way to get to where I am. There were some problems in bed in part those days. And one of the father's scholars said that, to make this ministry go on, let's divide the money into two and give them. I said, I don't want it. I didn't practice thing for money. You can go and check the record. I said, no. I don't want it. I don't need anything. All of here, there is nothing in your pocket that look like anything to me. I have left that stage long time. Long time. My offering every Sunday, if I tell you, you will be a Christian again. I started from Tennessee, this, you can't tell where I am now. If your heart is not wrong, it's wrong. Sometime I tried to walk around people, making them feel like I have nothing. Very, very sober, oh please, bless me small, that, and I'm laughing. I've already put them on the skin. I am trying to tell them, but I can't go directly, tap into my grace. Sometime I see that, there's a financial that I was hoping for there. But I know what for them to do to get the door open. But I tried to them, you have not blessed me for a long time, this, 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 this. I want their spirit to catch it. It's like you make a brigade, the brigade is trying to tell you, can you take me for lunch? You must see it as an opportunity, not begging. No, you have to work with people who know where they stand. It's only Ghanaians who cannot pick that thing. It's amazing. It's only Ghanaians who cannot pick that thing. If you didn't put more like the things I'll tell you today. You won't go and sleep, you'll be here. Last, yesterday was 12 hours, today you make it 24. That is why I say, I'm preaching you a message, you'll be tested. After you marry, you will meet, okay, some of you marry eh. You marry pastors. And then, whilst you are working, you'll be promoted. Satan can promote you today with you. If you know it doesn't have character. Now, your boss said, we have to be going for trek. And then when you go, you'll sit with chief executives. You fly private jet. It's a good place to despise your husband. A man in Kachoba, the food is cooked. But when you- If you are clapping, you eat the food that is prepared. It's not the same. I have come to your level to preach what I'm preaching to you. There are both all food and what they say. One day, we were in London, we were going to a restaurant, I was with Brother King's APJ. When I got there, they said, you are wearing trust suit, you can't come here. And I learned that that restaurant, you must wear suit to enter. Charlie, when we finished eating, they brought the beer, so the driver must take me there to just eat food. I told my wife, I said, listen, D, I, I am angry, but you know, I want to wear the suit and see the kind of food they are cooking there, is it from heaven? Are the chefs in jealous? I was talking, until I arrived there. When I saw the caliber of people. The food, they don't bring a bengua, who do you have no fire to train eh? You are working at the Kuta, I said, then, no! Yeah? That is the day I saw that you can finish eating satisfied, but then in daos. Minim, eh, daos, minim no brafo, minim can brafo. Won't can chat about, no, cool school, Papa. So what did you not daos, you can't brafo, I say. Sleep on you, okay? When you eat and the food, sleep on you. I support you. I was there! I'm telling you. I think they bring this one small, they bring this one small. They, they will come and explain, eh, this one is made from, they say for something, from eh, 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 it's a personal eh, from, from under the water. We, we went to the Antarctic water to bring it, and we have cut it. And eh, 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 it has vitamin, this and this. Bonaparte. Maybe I saw the fuck woman there, nah, son, maybe another one, but then they, when they finished, they brought a bear. The pastor took, one of the guys who took a wetting man, took his car, the car is black. Swap it. He asked me, prof, do you also take away? I told, I said, eh, this money, take away. If you give me this money, I buy kinkay and fish in the rest. Let me tell you something that experience can do that anointing cannot do. When I started traveling internationally, something happened to me, and if I didn't get cancer, I could have fallen into the trap. I was traveling, that time Dr. Maurice Lloro has come to Ghana, I was preaching in action. So I went there, and Papa spotted me, he said, Nana. Don't go come and see me, I said Papa, I'm flying. I said, why are you going? I said, I'm going to say, who invited you, I said, this, I mentioned some white, he said, Nana. Nana. When you go to work with the white people, God is blessing you, start to move. The first church that invited me to UK was a white man. And I was to preach in Newcastle for Apostle Ken God. And they say, when you go, and they try to take you for shopping, don't tell them you like the money. If you do that, you'll know that you have poverty mentality, they will cut you off. I said, Papa, good. When they take you to restaurant, don't look at the restaurant, they say you like the money, they should give you the money, don't do that. Because they will check you whether you are, you have poverty mentality, because they are setting mindset for African. So make sure you don't disgrace us. I said, Papa, good. Also, I fall into the temptation. I remember I finished preaching, the pastor said, Nana, let's go for shopping. I'm taking you to Harroch. I went there, he say, this one is suit, choose three. I checked the price. I went to the guy, I say, eh, eh, what is this, is it a price? I said, who sold, is it sold from heaven? Then, then, then you tell me, you said that, Nana, have you found something? I say, yeah, I'm so lucky. Immediately, the words start ringing. I can hear like a picture, when you go and they try to buy you something, don't say you like the money. At that time, I was almost going to say, I, I, I like. Also, look at what happened to me. I choose some two suit and other things, he pay for it. When we're going, then we went to a restaurant to eat, he said, prof, I really like you. I cut off from a lot of Ghanian pastors and Africans, because you bring them to a restaurant, eh, 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 we're shopping, and they want the money. And you are the only one who has not behaved like that. This one, anointing cannot do it all. Because you can be anointed with a stinking thinking. You can be anointed with a certain mindset. Papa told me, he said, don't fall into the trap, before you, you may not be able to recover it. I have worked in that thing up to now. Mindset, when you value money more than everything, and you come around wet people, they cut you off. Let me end with this. Character. What do I call it? The security, every kid, this thing. What a blessing. I proposed to my wife, then I want to marry. He said, I've agree. Then next day, I carry her to Adenta. You know, security, and I'll show it to my spiritual father. I went, I said Papa, I found this lady, I want to marry her. Now, listen, I was going to marry another lady. And because of tribal circumstance, the mother, Papa told me, you can't marry her. She said it in my 50th birthday, he said, you can't marry her. This is not, if you have a father, if you don't have anybody in your life that can say stop and you stop, you don't have a mentor. And you don't have a father. Against your will, I love that guy, but my father said, you can't. I told Papa, I said Papa, I'll break through it, I'll break through, he said, you won't break through anything. No, I said Papa, my prayer will, I will fast. The mother would agree, say you agree. And he told me something, he said, if you go, you'll fight this battle for the rest of your life. Back off. I'm a back off. It's nothing to do with laugh. They tell you call laugh, it's not what make marriage work. No. Laugh, that's not what make marriage work. No, 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 no. All the people that divorce, they usually laugh one another. But they make something, the marriage laugh couldn't handle. Come to protest, I have a marriage series on pendrive, come and buy one. It will save you now and your future. Go and buy one. I didn't put it online, I let them delete it, it's on pendrive. So bring it to them, make sure they buy everyone, especially the guys who are wearing brown, brown or one. Give it to everyone, fire camp, they can fire the camp and go back and disgrace us. Character. The prophetic anointing was released on Ghana than any nation in this world. This country become the eye of the prophetic. Car, lack of character destroy the office. People don't want to hear that name prophet. Lack of character. You think it's easy to walk around and say you are prophet? No, everywhere you go, people check you. Now, when recently, I said, nobody should call me a prophet, Papa told me, say no, we'll call you. We'll call you because you are, you are a hope and a restoration to the office, so we'll call you. I said, I don't want it, because, no. They came out with another strange doctrine that prophets don't preach. They didn't study the way. So when they are in familial spirit, they didn't know sleeping with people's wife. Gifted, but not character. Your gift mean nothing to God, because it's a gift. It's your character that God is watching. It mean nothing, what you do, you are by gift, it's a gift, you receive it. One foolish boy told you, you are beautiful, you have added it to your CV. You are walking around, lack of character. It's in your resume, I am the beautiful girl in official's category, who told you? Who told you? There are some stupid guys in church. They slap it again, the guy say you are good in bed, they have added it to their CV. So he's walking around, good in bed, good in bed, good in bed. When you fall into a pit, you never, may the Lord deliver you from stupidity. Tell your neighbor, build character, build character. Now, listen. If you are courting with a girl, a guy that don't want your father to know. Let's go and greet daddy, no, let's wait, we are praying, obwa. He's a suspect. You are coming to church, you are walking, when he see your father coming, he push you somewhere, then he start to speaking in church. He is a dangerous guy. Because that is a sign that he's not taking you anywhere. They'll come back and say, I didn't tell you, I love you. I told you, I propose, I took mommy to Papa. When I went there, you know Papa, I, 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 I say Papa, I told him that I'm bringing the lady, I find another lady, he say, he keep, after the first one broke, I said, he asked me, I said Papa, I've ended it, he said, good enough. Let's pray, pray. Then I find mommy, I went there. That time Papa was living at Adenta. I took him to his house. When we got there, I told him, I'm bringing the lady. He says, sit at the hall, he came there, he was worried, he started, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I think he was vetting her, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And he came, he give me a sound, said, Nana, follow me. When I came, he asked me, see in the church, I said, I said, you look familiar, so, his sister, I said, so, yeah, 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 yeah. Then come, then he started speaking in fancy, I say, make robot in then. He said, oh, yes, okay. Who's his standing, oh, yeah, now, so I say, Nana. It's been 25 years. Now, those of you here, give me one reason why you didn't clap for Jesus, give me one, those of you here. I finished preaching. You will need character to you take your last breath. That's something you pick today and drop it tomorrow, you need it to you take your last breath. Every stage of your life. If you marry cross 20, one day you feel like, one day you come to the place, and when you live with a woman under one roof for 20, 22 years, you can, even the devil can tell you have made a mistake. When you start climbing higher, you can hear voice, it's not your standard. All of them is checking your character. When you were down, was he your standard? Tell your neighbor, your problem is lack of character, tell the person that. And you know, let me tell you, there are some people here I'm preaching eh, also, they've taken themselves after mercy, they think they have character. You know the people that we are preaching, that they tell them. You should tell them, you are not part of it, okay. I like that one. You need it. Eh, whether you are managing director, look at a true story. A guy that is about to be promoted to one of the top banks in Ghana, sitting in office as a deputy. The other boss was about to resign. He closed from work, and one lady was wearing one of their uniforms. And he gave her lift. She doesn't pray. This one is not a story, one of the guys told me. When he gave the girl lift, by the time he came to himself, he was in a girl's house eating salad. Oh, this salad. She cannot remember what happened. She say he was wearing a boxer shorts, a singlet, and she was eating salad. The girl was standing there with a transparent nightgown. Then that scene also became blackout. When he woke up again, he was lying by the girl naked. It's not a fiction, I'm telling you true story. She couldn't get a post. The wife has divorced her. The guy's life is a mess. Now, listen. For you to be in church, and command that demonic spare and enchantment, pause, who has be with you? That means your prayer level is very low. Think about it, can you imagine me, Prophet Nana? Me, Nana, say by grace of God, I give you a lift, and you can enchant me to eat salad. You will be eating coconte before I eat the salad, it is not, it's not argumentative. If you don't die, God has always sent me. No, listen, no devil will try that thing on me. It's not possible. If I breathe on you, you will not suffer. May you receive power to subdue your enemy. Some pastors talk about women tempting them, nobody has tried that on me. For the years I've been preaching three decades, no woman can wear something tried, nobody. Licaduba atoyo. Sisaya na makutaya. I will curse you, you will not recover again. It's not possible. A pastor friend in Denmark, eh, what's the name of that? That, that country that they have the, the headquarters of the European Union, what is the name? Brussels, or, yeah, Belgium. A woman came to his office, eh, lying in his sofa, lift up his leg somewhere, and the pastor say, prof, I almost fell. You come to my office and lift up your leg. If your leg come down again, God has always sent. I am not telling you something to be excited, oh. I'm saying this one, I can enter a realm, my wife is afraid to lie by my side. One day told me, say you were lying down, your face was like a lion. I was in a realm of a fast, he said, he, I saw her in a sofa, in a family area. I came, I said, I'm okay here. I said, what happened, I said, when I enter, your face like was like a lion. What did they call Jesus, the lion of the tribe of Judah, so bad. When I start engaging the principalities and the powers, he said particularly when we were building protest city afresh, and used to engage in long fasting, so that your body become so hot, I'm afraid, he said, I touch you and vapor. And me myself, I don't feel. No, listen. You fought cheaply because you have not paid price. Fight cheaply. The amount of price that has gone into this area, we are still paying. We can sell it on the likes of Delilah. They can't. No. 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 I have never met a beautiful woman, I will never meet one. Never. They think people call beauty and live that stage in the spiritual long time. Kasava tri baoba tri, my, my, please. It's not a thinking, the thing that attract you to fall, it doesn't shake me. Ever. Let us stay. Keep yourself in a certain realm. I heard your father say something, you walk in the realm of God. It's a realm. Is it not written in your laws that you are here God, and you are the, now, everything produces after it can. The child of a goat is a goat, it's not a discovery. The child of a sheep is a sheep, it's not a miracle, the child of God is one. And how can the God thought cheaply for a woman? Be strong in the law. 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 And in the power of this one. Not just boast. It's what anointing you carry two by four, you can see one or two, one of none later, you are bragging with it. Build strength. There's anointed man of God, he was winning so small than Billy Graham. She was in a group, say a woman walked to a hotel, couldn't resist. Do you know the danger of becoming a busy as a man of God, it can cut you from your prayer others? The, one of the danger of preaching is that, the day you don't pray, that's the day the power will move. That one, the longer let to feel prayer is no pressure. Father knows what I'm talking about. I have been this journey for long, for long. I don't measure the size of a meeting, by the way you taught me, the meeting was nice. I go back to find out from God, what I was supposed to do, I couldn't do. Everybody can let to feel good, but God is angry with you. Take it. Never go by purpose validity to determine where you stand with God. Go to a date that wait upon that they shall renew their strength. Ay, ya, 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 come and let us resonate together. Come and let us resonate together. Build character. Develop a good heart. Walk in wisdom. Walk in wisdom. Walk in wisdom. It's a principality. Wisdom is a principle, with all that I can get understanding. And after you walk in wisdom, pursue understanding. It's the most powerful thing on earth. With all your getting, get understanding. The serving spirit of God. When it descend upon your life. Don't mess your life. Don't destroy your destiny. You don't know what has, I thank God I didn't destroy myself. The things that I was chasing, today I don't know what to do with it. Somebody gave me my first BMW many years ago, I left my wife in a bed, we took her to sleep in the car. I wake up in the morning and wash the car for three hours, I was living in Bawi. I went to Kandaman to buy wax. I had to say, mkuu, the fat car, no, the car will be shining, shine, 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 shine. And warm to you, if I pack the car, you touch it, shine. Those things don't mean nothing. One day my wife was trying to get car papers, and he say, you have given all this car, we have to give the papers to the paper. In front of me, I counted not less than 50. And that was the one he can remember where it is. So, if I got trapped by a car, what's going to happen? If my wife wanted to mess a slide because she has to follow someone with car, today he has cars, he can't drive. She can't drive. I ask her, you'll be 50 years next month, what do you want me to, he can't even tell me. He said, boy, I don't need anything. No. He said, I don't, I said, I don't know. I told, he said, he can't even tell me what he need. And Inuk walk with God. Walk with God. Walk with God. Walk with God. I have fought a good fight. Say yes, the end of that first class apostle. I have finished my course, but I love the next it, I have kept the faith. Keep the faith. And you don't keep the faith by carelessness. Don't be careless. Don't be hurry to rush into something you regret tomorrow. Invest character. Invest prayer. Build character. Let your heart be journey. No, everybody can say you are a fool, let your heart be journey. Don't take advantage of anything. If you are serving under me, you don't have a good heart, one day you will be affected. There are some pastors here, very sure I'm going to send them. I'm telling you, and I'm, I'm sending, they all told me the time is right. I'm sending them. I will start sending them to the nations. I was in a country, they were begging me, can you start a church here for us? There is no church in this community, can you? If you can bring a pastor here. I said, no, I told them, I said, when the time come, I will tell you. Me, I'm not a pastor, I won't pastor, I'm a man, a man, sons and daughters, they will pastor. If you didn't have a character follow me, when you become independent, whatever you show, it will come after you. That's the way you build character, go back and work on yourself. It is never too wrong to be right. It is never too late to be right. Build character. It will carry, I know what I'm talking about. What I wanted to preach with, I couldn't preach it, because you put it online. I was going to share practicality, now listen, all your generals has always been showing you their trophy, you must see their scar. No, today I was going to show you the scars. There is no general without a scar. And it's dangerous to meet great people, they all they show is their trophy. And there is nobody who has gone to war without a scar. How did we come to where you are? What are the things we have escaped? What are the things we have escaped? Where did God test our heart, and we have to pass the test? You can cause something's crisis, it's a test. God doesn't want to shut and move down to test one person. For a greater one, because one day God told me, when you fall down, when you are down, it doesn't make impact like when you are up. That is why God trains you before you get up there. Whatever was driven in power, if anything happened to me, the impact will not as great as now. Whatever mistake I do, it cut across global, it cut across the globe. Listen to me. My wife is my witness. We were going to a country. And you don't need to go through migration. I got there, the man says, scan your passport. I scanned it to put my name, I typed something. Then I was going. I was walking out. Then one man said, excuse me, you, come. I said, me? I told the other guy, you, he said, no, you. I've gone to, can I say? When I enter his office, he say, listen, I want to ask you a question, I need a direct sincere answer. Are you coming to preach here? I said, who told me, who told you I'm a preacher? He said, don't ask me questions. I have the power to take you back. Answer me. I stood as eight. I said, well, I didn't even plan to preach, I came here to just. I didn't even plan to preach, I came here to just. Have a vacation. But since like you know, I don't know how you get to know me, but. Maybe I know pastors here who know me. And maybe they can ask me to come to the church, when I go, they can give a microphone to greet. When I'm greeting, you can call the preaching, so okay, anyway, have a nice day. Then mommy asked me, how did he know? I said, go and ask him. Then when I step, I go spoke from him, he said, be careful. Now people know you there, you don't know there. Hong Kong airport. We got there late. I was wearing t-shirt, the conditions are shut, it was hot. And I removed my t-shirt. Bare chested. My wife say, hey, boy. What is that? I said, Hong Kong, who knows me, this is the first time, Hong Kong, we are in Hong Kong. And it was night, the airport was quiet, there was nobody. So the people told us, we are almost closing, but. There's a problem with our flight, so I put that, so I was finally with the thing, with my chest hair. And my wife said, hey. We step out, we're going to a loo, a woman walk, I say, hey prophet! No, that day, my wife did something I will never forget, when the man said prophet, he pretended he was not walking with me. He started moving very fast. So I mean, I'm standing there. Then I was trying to, so I put the shirt on my chest like this, I didn't whether to wear, he said, prof, wow! I'm sorry to see your hair in your chest back. I will never forget that thing for the rest of my life. Then the woman said, you know, you came to Seattle to preach. I was in a church, I live in, I came from Hong Kong. I never thought I would meet you. Wow! Where are you going? I said, eh, me eh man. Oh, is that mommy, she is gone? And you too may they not come, mama. One of the dangerous life you can never put yourself in. It's when people know you, but you don't know them. You can get angry and insult somebody. Who holds your blessing. So everywhere I go, I have to comport myself. I have to, because you don't know, I'm telling you. Dude, I was telling him at all night, when we're coming from. From Hamburg to Canada, we came to Dubai, missed our flight. We were there, my wife said, let's walk, there was a small mobi, let's walk there because we're feeling bored. Mommy said, let me buy something, he entered shop. The guy told, this man is a pastor. And my wife said, do you know where you come from? He said, I'm from Zimbabwe. I have never smelt Zimbabwe eh. So mommy said, maybe Facebook. Say, you watch him on Facebook, no, me, I'm not on Facebook. So how do you know he's a pastor? I said, I know. He said, I know. I know he's a pastor. He said, you are man of God, I know, he didn't even say pastor, he said, you are man of God. I know. I don't go to church, but I know you are man of God. I don't say that. This is just about Monday, is it Monday or Tuesday, I think Tuesday. I don't go to church, but I know you are man of God. So when you misbehave, they know. When you fall into their trap, they know. No? They have another eye. They see. They can tell. If you are not genuine, they know. If you are genuine, they know, if you are faking it, they know. If you have unconfessed sin, they know. They know, build character. Yeah, I've moved you from your seat eh. You'll be great, God will bless you. Amen. Humble lady, oh, oh. This is why if you marry, you don't have a problem. When you say stand, if you forget, you'll be standing. If it is you, I'm tired. Come and sit down. Your problem is not because you are, you lack character. I have seen beautiful women who cannot stay in marriage. Pretty. Some of them gifted, they sing like a ko, they can sing like a parrot. Fill my cup, Lord! They don't have character. They can sing, but they don't have character. Character. I see women also who can, people can come around pastors and serve. When they about to be rewarded, character tests their faith. They all told me something, he say, I was about to reward somebody around you. Because he doesn't understand life in the spirit. The faith. Sometimes, I am offended, it's as a result of deep down pride. The word I'm offended, I'm angry, it shows how deep your pride is. I don't like what they said about me, who are you? No, they told Jesus you are a devil, did you not say you are a devil and you are Samaritan and you have a devil, he said, I don't have a devil. As far as Jesus is concerned, insult is an opinion. He never take it personal. Jesus never took it personal. Have I blessed somebody here today? No, I want to know, I've finished with you, is there anybody here that's received a word? Every insult is an opinion. The father you are hanging around men who correct or rebuke you, because you know, you need a certain character to hang around anointed people. Because they cannot be predicted. You hang around me, I can offend you. And I'm not even aware of offended you. Because where my life and my spirit is, I don't think about offend. People tell me, they were offended, they were angry, I said, what did I do? The wind blow where they listening. You can hear the sound, but you can't tell where it's going, so it is with a man that is born of the spirit. That means they are unpredictable. It is key, how many times Elijah offended Elisha? Hang around this rainy man, today a wind is taking him somewhere. One day he is here, he's calling fire to kill people. A man that has called fire to kill people, if I hang there, you make a mistake, he's eh, errant. I'm telling you. But these people hang around there. Hang around there. Stand to your feet, lift up your two hands. Push shata pasata. How many of you catch something here? Let's enter into the spirit. Now, listen, lift your two hands, finally. After you have done all this thing that you qualify for impartation. Now, laying out of hand is not a decoration. It's contact and transmission. When you put a pin or a nail in a life. Why, it will shock you. So for instance, if I lay hands on you today. Something can leave me and enter you. And that is called impartation of grace. That means that I can walk out of this baby. And somebody has taken double portion of the grace that is on me. So if I've ever come to Potter City and walk, and walk to all the places. When I go to Invesy, the people come and say, let's go and rent equipment, I say, we don't rent. Where we come from, we are not permitted to rent. We don't rent, I thought for all the equipment we bought, we finished, we pack them in a warehouse and it's there. We have never rented one equipment. When we were going to Canada, we can drive the equipment from US to Canada, they didn't allow it. I says, for US people, let's buy one set for Canada. State of the art, everything you saw using the Canada, it now belong to us. In fact, listen, the company couldn't even supply all. There are still more, they say, nobody has bought things like this. And none of them was alone. No, somebody is watching me on live, but this man is angry, but that is his business. That's what faith does. Straight. In fact, the new cameras we bought. For Canada. It's what we brought to Ghana to use. So people are saying your latest, ask Pastor Marty, latest, eh, what do we call it? Black magic. Set. We bought it. LED screens and everything. No, if you hang around me, you are twisting people's hand for their money, you don't have a future. There is no, how the equipment are bought, I can't explain, but there's nobody will knock at this door, please, you are buying equipment to help, never. If God can't do, let no man try. It is not the noise you make, it's what you can produce. Amen. You go there, we buy, we put it in a warehouse. Buy here, we put it in a warehouse, buy there, we put it in a warehouse, everywhere we go, we have never rented the equipment for any of our programs. Never. Like Potter City, we are not permitted to take a loan. Hallelujah to Jesus. You have more than you bargained for. Now, today, I walk, the way Moses laid hands on Joshua, and the spirit of wisdom came upon him, I want something to come upon him. Now you see this girl eh, this lady eh, if he catch something today, he will be the Somi Sola and the... You know, when I came here, he was singing eh, I saw the spirit of Somi Sola upon her. Listen. So my sonless husband told me, he said, Papa, you are strange. I was trying to take him to Europe, and it three days to travel. Three days I got him a visa. I said, leave it for me. It's a phone call. Straight. I have a daughter here, Adoma. Three days, I said, girl, you have to be with me, God said, you have to be. He said, Papa, I don't have visa, I said, give me your passport. By the time they were giving the passport back to her, it was a visa inside. I said, bring me your passport. If you like, collect people's passport, let's see what. No, are you understanding it? It's straight. I got invitation from United Nations. To invite that girl from Nigeria. So the way I made them do the invitation, the embassy called them. Said, bring your passport. I call embassy, I say, sign invitation to Nigeria, so so so, I need this person to be with me. This is not talk or anything. You are fasting for twenty-one days, you want a visa to Togo, and you are not getting it. Twenty-one days. One guy was going to Togo, they repatriated him. When he came to term, I said, you have to fast for seventy days. He said, you go to Togo at a flower, then the immigration officer said, you, I will let you enter Togo. That's right there. I was walking in Ghana, Pastor Marty was preaching, a great man of God called me, Father, he said, hey Nana. You have poor yourself on this guy. And I said, why? I said, in fact, it took me ten minutes to position myself to see that it's not you. Now, listen. The amount of hands, my hand that has been up, lay on him. My brother, when I was traveling, there was somebody I wanted to take. They say, no, no, they say, it's not possible, you can't let him go. Unless you put your bank statement. I said, no problem. I said, no problem. They called me, said, Nana, please, there is a dirty Baptist church there. I won't do to step there. I said, Papa, step in. Okay. When I stepped there, they give me microphone. I didn't plan, I did, but you see, there are some fathers who can't say no. That is what is called character. Eh? There is a realm you come to where you have something small than your fathers. You can command something they can't command. It doesn't mean that you are above them. That is the problem of thi- this guy, one day you command more crowd than me. But if you forget that I am his father, it is the beginning of his falling. Disappointing person, I got him partition from Copland. What I'm doing, Copland's not doing it, but it's stupidity for me to sit there and think I'm bigger than Copland. Watch this! And I told you before, Joshua took the people to the promised land, as if Moses failed. Elijah did double of Elijah, as if Elijah didn't do anything. On the mountain of Transgression, God didn't call Joshua, didn't call Elijah, he called Moses and he called Elijah. So, you see, the fathers has a seat. May the Lord open your eyes. Eh? Finally, let me say this. Never fight with the man who have called daddy before. In the spirit, if you sit down and one day you don't talk to that man, you are under a curse. And you yourself can reverse the curse. That curse, God will not reverse it for you. That is a, do you know that the prodigal son, when he left, he never called his father? Never. The day he called the dad was the day he felt like he was eating pig's food. The guy should have still stay in touch with the dad. But then, when he disconnect himself and broke, because once you break a law, it doesn't matter what is in your hand, you can multiply it. A will is not authentic, it's like the testator and the testament. So, you can ask for a will while your father is alive. So, in the first place, he broke a spiritual and a natural law. So, what you are going to do, it will sound like money is in your hand, you are making it, but it's just a matter of time. You start singing. Now, now, the Nigerians don't try, I saw the Ghanaians who do that. No, 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 no. No. Yeah? Natalia, my birthday, she called Ben, she say, I want to surprise Prophet. He was coming to my house to blow a trumpet for me. He call it some trumpet. That day, he got a call from Papa Debo, he said, let's go to Canada. He say, Prof, I go down from the plane, have to follow my Papa. It's a covenant. One day Apostle, Apostle, eh? Eh? What is his name? Oropo came to preach for me. Oropo landed, and then he had a call. He called me, he say, Prof, I can't do, he say, you know, Papa Debo, you want me to go and preach at his church in Manchester? And he called me, I say, hey. I sit down, say, God forbid that I will be the one that is a contact for you to disobey that man. You are leaving now. I joined him. Apostle Oropo was standing in Manchester, and I told him, I say, hey, boy. I said, never, it's not an argument. He said, but Prof, let me preach this, and I said, fine. We have to work out the plane ticket. That would take him, that day he left his wife, and it's only his hand for me. He said, I have to leave my son and my wife, you know, okay? I said, you are leaving. If we don't get a ticket for you, we are not preaching. That they say you couldn't get to Manchester because you came to preach for Nana. Prophet, and, and it was Papa Debo that called you. Hey, Othovo, I am older than you, and I'm wiser than that. He said, no, I understand spiritual navigation. This one, the devil will not get him. We got a flight for him. That day, he didn't finish preaching, she ran away to the, eh, plane, rushed there, got there and preached, and later I sent his wife home peacefully. Now, listen. Never fight people. This man of God has brought you here. Camp you here. One day, when you buy your first C class, don't sugar your body like this. And make it look like you have arrived. I told you. There is nothing any of these my sons have that I. I said, they, I will not need them, but they will need me. I don't brag about things, so, no, listen. All the presidents in Ghana, that are my friends, I've never take a picture with one and put it in my file. But almost all of them, I don't even tell people. Last lesson, one of them drove to me, people saw it, drove. Because I know you, you won't tell me whether I win election or not. Because my people have told me, no, Prophet Nana won't tell you that. But just pray with me. I prayed, we took pictures, I never even said it. But when I need help and I call them, they help. When I call them, I say, I need this and this to be done. If it's in their power, they will do it. Yes? Amen. Yeah? I have to take my daughter to school when I was traveling. And I have to postpone my flight from, eh, from Sunday to Monday, cost me. And Friday, they have no release his visa. They have to release his passport, lock up in embassy. And I need to travel, I have to go to Germany and move and take her to. Know what you know, who you know, who you are connected to. Hey, listen, listen, listen. If the bachelor didn't mess into self to Fero, she will rot in prison. Don't take relationship for granted. It is another thing I didn't tell you. You hang around people, they are checking you. One day, God can use one person to open one door. And the door will never be closed again. There is nobody God bring to your life that is an accident. Any relationship you are connected, it's not an accident. Yeah? Do you know some people, the doors they have opened for me? Do you know the things they've done for me? Do you know some men of God? When I was establishing my ministry in America, Richard Robert was very instrumental. I have to know this, Robert, sir. Give me direction, I could have fallen. He said, Nana, you don't have a church. You are going to build a ministry. The structure for building ministry should be different from church. And the people around me was turning me on the church, could have been trouble. Give me a professor that gave me the guideline to write the, the constitution. And then, one day, when you have to have the church, we leave the window soapy. He said, let this be the tree and give it branches. Because no, they favor you from something. Do this this way, don't do it this way. Don't pass here, pass here, don't do this, do that, don't touch it, go, don't go here, go here. You need people, it's what everybody you hang around there because of money. There are people you hang around them for impartation, you hang around them for favor, you hang around them for protesting. There are people you hang around there because you must be on their prayer altar. Period! You call them, you stay in charge with them, when something is about to happen, they can pick it. Elijah told Gerazi, what is happened to the shunamite, to man that God did not reveal to me? That means that Elijah, Elijah put himself in a place that anything that must happen to the woman, he must see it. He said, this one, what is it that God has hidden it from me? God, the, the shunamite has fed Elijah until he has come on his prayer altar. He said, what is this? Look at the way you raise the dead baby. Lie on the ground, nose to nose, mouth to mouth. Wake up, do it a second time, the baby jump back to life. Listen. Sometimes, it is not your prayer. It is a spiritual father you have despised. It is his prayer. You are the latest man God is calling. But you have not picked the voice of God yet. This Eli that is backsliding old prophet, somewhere he can guide you to know the voice of God. No! You are a prayer warrior again, twelve hours, kaya oh, kaya oh, kaya oh. You are praying for the fruit of the womb. But the prophet that has not prayed such a prayer, and consider women that praise that prayer as drunkers, that you can easily say that, come now, prophet. All these prophet, they are jealous. When you pray, instead of their jealousy, they have lost their prayer power. Eh? You need him to say, may the Lord grant you the petition. Thank you for desire. I face somebody who shout and did a lot of prayer. She will eat that prophet, she said, hey! These are the protocols in the spirit. Michael. These are the protocols in the spirit. Only my Lord's prayer power, by your word is in his mouth. Because the mouth of the prophet must produce a prophet. Number two. The prophet you are despising, that baby, somewhere in your womb, he is the one that will mentor him. One day, he's going to live with that old prophet, and he will mentor him to know the voice of God. I'm preaching. Slap somebody by the shoulder, and say, humble yourself, humble yourself. Humble, if you didn't mind, you slap it harder, say, humble yourself. Don't cut off relationships like that. Don't, don't let your pride and your arrogance, the father you can leave a vision and go to another church that somebody you break through. Cassava don't survive in every soil. Maybe this is why you will survive. Your arrogance has approached you. Yeah? Yeah? Othovo. I have some pastors, eh, when they were there, in Taman, they were senior than these people. Today, they are working in an Arab country in a restaurant. Somebody told me, said, Papa, when you see this your son, you cry. These people were nowhere. They were the champions. Proved themselves. Amen. Pastor Marty stay around me, serve me, seventeen years before God gave him a child. And Professor One was forty years. I say, by the time you are forty-five, God will give you twins. He called me forty-five years, he say, Papa, forty-five years, and two children are in front of me. I spoke the word, seventeen years. Now, listen. I put his wife in my house. I said, let me see the devil that come and touch him. The first pregnancy we lost, I've taken him to South Korea. Eight months, he said, baby, the baby's, eh, water is dry, the baby, he lost the baby. This one, put him in my house. I send them to America. I told him, I said, listen, you are not going to give birth here, I'm taking you to America. I was praying, the Lord said, don't let them give birth on this soil, send them to a new track ground. To have that kind of father. Assuming he is despising and stubborn and arrogant, where will he get that favor? She will need me a lot. No! Forget about even the money, the spiritual covering. Too much. The covering! One day, I was there, the Lord told me, this whole week you are not going to eat. On the third day, I was fasting, I saw him coming, holding his wife like this. I said, what is it? He said, Papa, he's bleeding. I said, oh, forget it. At that time, the Lord has shown me, when I was dedicating the three, the two children. So, I didn't even keep it attention. And he was bleeding, I said, you are hammering it. When the doctor said, no, everything is fine, everything is intact, perfect. No, when you win it in the spirit, nothing can die. Nothing can change it in the nature. When you win it in the spirit, Jesus! The fire, the love is already in that emotion. Joshua, the son of Nand, was full of the spirit of wisdom. From Moses, the servant of the Lord, has laid hands. At this impartation, from today you walk in wisdom. The Lord show you favor. The Lord honor your faith. May you see the goodness of the Lord in the land of the. I can tell you by the grace of God on my life, that when you get out of this camp, you don't need to tell them, everybody will see that God has visited you. Something awesome has happened. I bless you. I bless you. Let this anointy speak for you wherever you go. And let God favor you. Everybody take an offering. Give us a song to dance. Some of you have never danced, eh, danced, you have never danced the whole year. What an opportunity. Lift up your seed, I command God's blessing over your seed in Jesus' name. Bring both your seed and your sacrifice. Come to the altar. God, richly, richly bless us. Wahamanati, wahamanati, oh, wahamanati, oh, wahamanati, siya boka. If your seed is ready, you can bring it, bring it now. I want to thank your father and your mother for inviting me. I don't think, I don't think it's every puppy that will have the opportunity to stand and preach. Therefore, the ones God give me the opportunity, I don't take it for granted. Now, I just received, I was reading one testimony from America. And, eh, the person said, I've been following you from Canada to Europe, to all your movement. And I was just watching you at the all night. And I think this person you preach for this event might be somebody very special. And I tested the person back, and I say, he's more than special, you have to use the word. But, I loved it. I loved it. Sometimes I invite them to my house for dinner. I'm going to invite them for another one. Child! That one, I want to bring the chef from France. How many of you want to join us?
Chef France, what?
It's cancer. All of you that I left, I didn't say chobah, I said dinner. But, I mean, I, 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 you hardly hear me say things about, I, I love it. When, when Vicky was giving me my itinerary, there are some of them I was trying to cancel. But this one, I didn't even touch it. And I know, no matter how it cost me, I will be here. And, eh, I, I, I love them dearly. They are very, very special to me. I don't know, I don't know, I cannot explain it, but I think it's divine. It's not, I, I don't love rough rough. Look at a neighbor and say, rough rough, I don't, I don't talk like that. But these people, they are very, very special to me. Hallelujah. And I really wanted to take very good care of them. You know, Bishop Tiddy just told me something many years ago in a pastors conference, and he said, I'm praying, I think it's not, it's, it's not Orlando, he said, I'm praying one prayer for you, that the people you minister to will love you. And I want to pray the same prayer, love them. And take care of them. And let them feel, it's, it's painful to minister to people, raise them, who turn their back, you need another heart to handle that. Yeah, I've been through a lot, so now I've become like a stone, things don't move me again. By the time you get to my age, a lot of things don't move you again, hallelujah. But take good care of them. Amen. Take good care of them. And make sure that every time I come, bless them, some of you are going to prosper, one day, just buy a car like a Hummer, send it to them. I love you, yeah? Take care. Somebody shall fire you, fire you. And I love all of you too. God bless you, we'll see you again. Amen, let's welcome your father. Lift your hands to Jesus. Can you lift your hands to Jesus? Can you wave it to the Lord? Something has shifted. And I want us to pray for the servant of God, Paul said, pray for me. And he made difference examples of the prayer. He said, pray for me that I may be delivered from unreasonable wickedness. He said, "Pray for me that I may be delivered from unreasonable wicked men." He also said, "Pray for me that the same utterance I had with you, I shall have with these people also." And Paul also prayed, Romans 15:30, he says, "Strive with me earnestly my contentions." Like Papa said, sometimes there are things you fight, no one knows you're fighting it. Paul said, "Pray with me with the intensity I pray about this matter." These are the people that move the ship of God in the earth. When you don't have men like this, certain things cannot be transferred. Let's pray from the bottom of our hearts. Sincere prayers, that Father, we ask for maximum lifespan, quality life. The one you gave the elders before, who in their eighties and nineties were still traveling nations. Ora Roberts in his nineties was still teaching the word. Kenny Hagan in his nineties still teaching the word. Bishop David Odepoine at seventies still runs services every Sunday. Lord, maximum strength, quality life in his elderly years. We pray that Lord grant him sons of consolation, sons of encouragement, sons that prove the worth of his labor, not just the few he has, but Lord extend it beyond the shores of Ghana. We pray for his family, we pray for his wife, oh, we pray for his children, that every one of them will become a shining example of the quality of his message. May they not be the reason we doubt his calling. May they be full proof of his ministry. Like Paul said, "That these are my joy and my crown of rejoicing at the appearing of Jesus Christ. May the souls of Portus be the crown of his rejoicing on the day of judgment. May he present the souls as his crowns for the most high God. Father, grant him the tenacity of heart. As David prayed in Psalm 78 and said, "Thou gave him the skillfulness of heart and showed him how to lead Israel like a shepherd. And as he did so, he did it to the integrity of his heart and the skillfulness of his hand. Father, may the skill to navigate the faces of his calling be released in twice as much fold in the name of Jesus. May he live full and die empty. May he live full and die empty. May it be said in the days to come, as God made anointings become mantles, that we call something the spirit of Moses, we call something the spirit of Elias. May he be part of the referenced names in the heavens. May they call the anointing the spirit of Nanasai Opoku Sakodiet. We would declare in those days to come that men imparted us unto the altars of prayer holiness and the passion of pursuit. Father, we ask for more than what he has blessed us with. And Lord, I say this with all humility, but as your servant was standing there and I wept, I heard Jesus say, he said, "Your Father has entered the realms where he's going to resemble me more." So as I wept, it was as if Jesus was standing behind the man. And we ask that a day is coming, as soon as it touches on a border, prayers should be answered in a country. A day is coming, thousands of people will gather individually having dreams to meetings where they knew not the location. Father, all your manservant's heart desire, fulfill exceedingly, abundantly, above all that he has ever asked or imagined. And let us be proof that he really labored on this earth. Let it be said, like was said in that town in Scotland, where they sold no alcohol there. And they asked why, he said, "Hundred years ago, Charles Finney came to town." Let it be said, that after fifty years of Prophet Nana's work on the earth, Portus it will be the reason why Prampram, Ninggo, Accra, Ghana, Africa will be a hallmark of holy pursuance of God. Let your name be glorified. Thank you for such a gift. It's by mercy. Thank you that we are also connected, it's by mercy. Sometimes I weep because who are we that you display such majesty with? Thank you. Father, your servant is in your hand. He is your glory. As your word said, the ministers of Christ are the glory of Christ. Let him shine as your glory. In Jesus' mighty name. Amen. Hallelujah. Get to know somebody. We are back again and when we come again, we are back again in two hours' time, ten thirty. Yes, we are just worshiping. Listen, we can't receive this anointing without worship. So we are coming for another two hours before midnight and we are worshiping into the new day. So catch some rest, go and get some food to eat. In two hours' time, ten thirty, we are here again. The Lord be with you. If you are tired, just shout, "God more." Amen. Say it after me, Father, I decree and I declare that indeed I'm a sinner. I went my own way all these years. But today, I come to you and I accept all my wrongs because I believe your blood is able to cleanse me of all unrighteousness. Therefore, I receive you as my Lord and personal Savior. Wash me, cleanse me, mold me and use me for your kingdom. From today, I will follow you wherever you go, with my life, with my time, with my energy, till the end of my days. In Jesus' name, amen.
If you just said the prayer of salvation, welcome to the family of God. We are glad you gave your life to Christ and we want to get to know you and follow up on you. Kindly contact us on zero two zero one nine four four zero zero six. Join us for our in-person meetings every Sunday, two thirty PM at Mikado Plaza near Laboni Junction and our daily evening prayers, six thirty PM, Mondays to Fridays on the Mixla app at Ephesus Radio. Also follow us on social media to stay updated. Ephesus gatherings worldwide on WhatsApp, Instagram and Facebook and Ephesus Gathering on YouTube. For inquiries to share your testimonies, prayers and counseling, please contact admin on zero two zero one nine four four zero zero six. Shalom, have a blessed week.